I'd like to call the Plan Commission to order. Carrie, Carrie, could you please take roll call? Or Kyle?
Chairperson Blazer?
Here.
Holder person Austin?
Here.
Lee Tao? Eric Daven?
Here.
Susan Feath?
I believe she's online.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Ben Goodrow?
Here.
And we have one vacancy, so we do have a quorum with six members.
Thank you, and hopefully that vacancy will be filled at our next council meeting. For my appointment. We have a long agenda, so let's get going. I need to leave probably just after 5:30 if we happen to go that long, but Ryan's gonna take over from that point. But we'll move it along. So item one is approval of the reports from June 6, 2022 Plan Commission meeting, and the June 1 public meeting. What are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by Eric, seconded by Ben. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
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 And anybody opposed? That motion carries. Item two is Vandewall and Associates, Wisconsin Rapid Recovery and Redevelopment Plan Update. Kyle?
Thank you. I'll be relatively brief. The contractor Vandewall is looking to host a symposium on July 21. I believe all of you were invited, and there's no need to register, but there will be a Zoom meeting link going out likely tomorrow or early next week, and you can just click on the link at the time and attend the symposium. It'll be about the industry in general, kind of future products, and then there'll be speakers from those different industries and talking about the challenges in the forest products industries, and again, what the future holds. I also want to note that there wasn't a ton of turnout for both the council planning charrette and the the public one. So the consultant will be putting together a survey, an online survey that should be available within a week or two on the city's website to gain some more feedback regarding the process. And then it is the consultant's intent to have the plan, or at least a draft, ready by the end of the summer or early fall. So that'll come before Plan Commission likely first for review and comment, and then ultimately council for final adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. We're on to item three. I guess, sorry, does anybody have any questions, Kyle? Okay. Item three, Dan Inc., extraterritorial CSM request for a certified survey map, approval for the creation of three lots, of which are under five acres within the town of Saratoga. The subject property is northwest of the intersection of State Highway 73 and Bainbridge Trail. County parcel IDs 1800135, 1800135C, and 1800135D.
Thank you. So again, it's, this request is before you because we have extraterritorial plat review within a three-mile radius around the city. This property falls about 2.5 miles outside of the city limits, just within our extraterritorial boundary. They're requesting three lots. The lots are approximately of similar size to those surrounding residential homes in the vicinity, and therefore, we feel like it is an appropriate lot creation. Would recommend approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a motion by Ben.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ryan. To approve the request. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And anybody opposed? That motion carries. We're on to item four, which is RC West LLC CSM 22-000531, request for a certified survey map, approval to combine two lots at 1810 Spencer Street, parcel IDs 3404578 and 3404579, and to dedicate right of way on 18th Avenue South.
Lot combinations typically don't require Plan Commission action, but because of the five-foot dedication on 18th, this is before you. The intent is just to develop this as either single-family or two-family use, which is permitted within that district. The lot combination also creates a conforming lot, which meets the standards within the district. Therefore, we would recommend approval.
Anybody have any questions for Kyle?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Eric.
Second.
Was that Ben?
Yep.
Oh, thank you. And seconded by Ben. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Item five is review of the tourist rooming house definition, supplemental standards, and conditional use permit process within the City of Wisconsin Rapids zoning code.
Thank you. So there was a memo provided that outlined the ordinance, defined what a tourist rooming house is, identified the the conditional use permit, or the conditional use required. So again, it's allowed within our residential districts as a conditional use, meaning in order to operate, you have to have that conditional use permit, which means submitting an application, meeting certain standards, and then ultimately being approved by common council. As part of that conditional use permit process, there is notification that goes out to surrounding property owners, and there's a public hearing notice. This item was prompted by some concerns at Plan Commission from a request made last month, and that request, as you can see, is directly after this one, which was postponed and sent back to the Plan Commission. The common council also hinted at looking at possibly making changes to the ordinance as it's written, whether that's, you know, changing it from a conditional use to a permitted use, or licensing these under our licensing chapter outside of the zoning ordinance. And there are, in looking at what other communities do, there are a lot of similarities. What we found out is that, for the most part, we are probably the most stringent in that we require a conditional use permit. Other communities, there are several that we have, that we've looked at. Mostly, this falls as a permitted use. So as a permitted use, it's permitted by right. You don't necessarily need a special approval. But in those communities, Green Bay, Hudson, Marshfield, DePere, and Oshwabanan, as long as you, right, have a home, that you own, you can operate a tourist rooming house. You have to get a permit through the city, a permit through the state or their agent, which typically falls on counties, and you gotta pay room tax. A lot of them have additional supplemental standards. We don't have to get into the details with those. The biggest difference I wanted to point out is that land use control, which is a permitted use versus a conditional use. We have it as a conditional use, which gives us the ability to add conditions based on the site, based on the request. It gives us a little bit more control, but it also gives us some flexibility that if there is a use that becomes, you know, a public nuisance or problematic, we can review it at our leisure, and we can pull that conditional use permit. I do also want to mention Point, which takes kind of a unique approach. If the the tourist rooming house is owner occupied, meaning that the owner lives and resides there, but maybe rents their second floor as a tourist rooming house, it's permitted. And I think the the thought there was that with the owner on site, it's lessening the chances of there being any negatives from the use, that they're there, they can manage the site. You know, they're they're gonna respond to different things quicker than maybe the police department would if there's noise or lighting, things of that nature. If it's non-owner occupied, Stevens Point requires a conditional use permit. So they've made that distinction in their ordinance. Again, we just require a conditional use permit flat out. So in a way, we're more restrictive than these other communities. But when you look at our supplemental standards, they're fairly simple. A lot of the other communities that have these as a permitted use, they have four or five pages of additional standards, background checks, annual reviews, and things under their licensing chapter that in some ways makes it more restrictive. So while from a land use standpoint, it's less restrictive, it's more restrictive from a licensing standpoint. So I feel as though that we've, we're kind of in the, in the middle in terms of the requirements for operating these facilities. And I, I think it's, it's appropriate to maintain it as it is. So I'm not necessarily suggesting any changes, but I'm certainly here to answer any questions or provide any further clarification that you may have. And this item isn't necessarily for action, but if the Plan Commission does want to direct staff to bring back an amendment in August, we can certainly do that.
And I think it's important to recognize that the state has already said that these are allowed. And I guess in my many conversations with Kyle since our last meeting, these are not something we can deny. You know, they have to be allowed. The only thing I think which gives us, I guess, a little protection would be the conditional use permit. And that's something that, you know, if there are problems, that it can be revoked. Learning now, though, that if it's a permitted use, and it's under, you know, they have to get a license, it's gonna take ordinance enforcement, it's gonna take the police department. But a conditional use is a lot easier to revoke, should that come to that point. And so I would agree with what Kyle said, is that the conditional use is the best way to handle it, in my opinion, versus going to a permit or something along those lines. But again, we cannot deny it. We can set other standards and conditions, but we can't say no. Anybody have, go ahead.
How's that work, then, if we can't deny it, but we put conditions, and they violate those conditions? And then, are we then denying it? Or if they come back two months later and they say they want it again, we can't deny it? Or how's that process?
So there's a, Carrie, if you want to go forward on a couple of slides here. In 2017, under Act 67, the state changed, substantially changed conditional use permits in the municipality's regulation of those conditional use permits. So I've highlighted a few items here. Basically, the state has said that any condition that you place on a conditional use has to be based on substantial evidence. So you can't just, you know, say, hey, I wanna regulate the time because we feel like it's appropriate. But it has to be founded on something. So, for example, if, you know, there were, there were multiple bedrooms in a facility, and they didn't have enough parking on-site to meet the zoning code parking requirements, you could add a condition stating that, you know, five parking stalls have to be maintained on-site. That directly related to, in ordinance, it's directly related to a standard of review, and that would be appropriate. Also, the Act 67 indicated that if the applicant meets or agrees to meet all of the requirements, and the conditions specified in the ordinance are imposed by the zoning board, the local government must grant the CUP, the conditional use permit. So if if they're agreeing to the conditions, if they're meeting the standards of review, we don't necessarily have reason to deny them, and therefore, it's very difficult to do so. Conditional use permits are supposed to be looked at as ways in which we can add conditions to a use, either based on the uniqueness of the use or the unique characteristics of the site location, to make that use fit within the neighborhood. And for years, municipalities were looking at conditional uses as ways to deny things. And the state stepped in with Act 67 and said, you can't do that anymore. You've got to look at it in the positive light on how can you approve these conditional use permits, and what conditions can you add to them to make them fit?
So if it came to Eric's follow-up, to Eric's question, so what, so the process to revoke the conditional use permit would be?
So, yeah, there is a section under that same act that does state, so it talks about what conditions we can impose. It does note that you can impose a review period, you can identify limits, time limits, and you can revoke a permit if those conditions are not being met. Or the standards, so we have a few standards that are identified in all conditional use permits. If one of those standards is clearly not met, you can revoke a conditional use permit.
Thank you. And like Kyle and I have been talking too, is that, you know, these are places that people want to rent. And so you're gonna, you're gonna want to have a nice place, you're gonna want to get good reviews, because otherwise, nobody will rent it, versus if it was a rental property, you know, that that's permitted within that use, and so that, so these places could become a rental property instead, and, and there's no way to stop that. And the PD and everybody can kind of attest to, you know, a poor rental or a poor property that's not properly maintained. But I think even having this designation as a tourist rooming house, there's, you know, there's gonna be an expectation, and it's gonna be a well-kept property, and, and hopefully be rented and well-received.
I have a few questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Maybe they're somewhat rhetorical for you, Kyle, but I think it helps some of the public who are either viewing this or looking at. I know we had a larger group last week, or I'm sorry, last month. What are some of the timeframes that you would permit this conditional use? So would they come back for review then, after, say, an annual basis? Or is this good until potential violation? Or, and maybe this ties into my next question, change of ownership in that property?
So, right now, if a conditional use permit is granted, and there's no condition with regards to limits or reviews, it runs with the land, and ownership change does not affect the continuation of that conditional use permit, meaning that that conditional use permit transfers with ownership. And that's happened with businesses. For example, there's a, there's a dog kennel that's being purchased in town. It previously got a conditional use permit. It'll be operated in a very similar manner, and so that conditional use permit stands with the new ownership. With that being a concern that was brought up at both Plan Commission and Common Council, you'll find that the next two items, I'm recommending a condition for staff to review within six months. So staff will reach out to the police department, will ask for any incident reports associated with the property, will look at our code violations, if any, related to the property regarding garbage, refuse, junk, parking, grass. If we feel as though there are things that are significant, if if it feels like there's a case building up, we'll then bring it back to the Plan Commission for review and present that to the Commission and the Council. If there's nothing, then we have the ability then internally as staff to just continue to extend that conditional use. I did not clarify that it gets reviewed every six months. If that's something that you want, in the next item, you'll want to maybe clarify that in a motion if you're going to move to approve it, whether it's, you know, just reviewed every six months, or it's reviewed annually. I think that would be a good mechanism for staff to make sure that these are operating appropriately within the neighborhood, especially because we wouldn't require a separate license in our office.
And then, process for approval of these would then come to the Planning Commission in the future for conditional uses? These permits?
So if if there's no changes to the ordinance, correct?
Okay.
Then any future request would have to follow the same set of procedures that the current applications have followed.
And so whether we set a six-month review, or concerned parties, say, in this scenario of the one that kind of brought up this discussion on Shady Lane, concern constituents or neighbors could also bring forward violations that we would then review in the conditional use of that permitted property?
Right. So if we received complaints, whether it's the police department or our code official, we have to verify those, we have to substantiate those, and if they are, we create a case or an incident report to document it. And again, if if there are a number of those relating to the use, then we we could bring it back for review under that review period if that's a condition placed upon the approval of the use.
So is it true, though, that some of these conditional use permits may vary in their conditions based on their location, size, occupancy, that kind of stuff?
That is correct.
Okay.
The condition should be more site-specific. For example, if you're going to just draft eight conditions and place all eight conditions on every single request that comes forward, I don't think that would be fair. They should be more site-specific and relate directly to the application that's submitted.
I think that's it for me.
Yes, go ahead, Susan.
I had an original concern, and I guess it's still carries over from our discussion, both at Planning Commission and then with the attendance at the council meeting that was issued back to us. I'm taking a look at the packet on page 32. It's from section 11.05.60. And it was stated several times here that the conditional use must run with the land. But here, what I see under Sub A is that you can specify otherwise. And I personally have, I guess, concerns about the difference in in situation. For instance, we have one situation presented to us in this very packet in which the owner lives on the property, and it's essentially an upper unit in in their living situation. So they are on premises, and and they are responsible people. But if the conditional use does run with the land, that conditional use obviously could be extended to the entire property. It could be extended to a person who really is less cognizant of of keeping a good place, and other things might happen. Why would we not say that when there's a change of ownership, the, the new owner has to come in to reaffirm the conditional use?
So I'm, I'm trying to jump on state statute here to see if Act 67 included that or not. So we can possibly circle back to that in a little bit. It's my understanding that, again, they run with the land. But Sue, I will, I'll look into this to see if I can find something clear within statute.
Well, okay, this part of the statute, to quote it, says, unless otherwise specified in the conditional use order, approvals run with the land.
Susan, I'm, I'm referencing, I'm referencing state statute and Act 67 in particular, which is not in our local ordinance.
I just had a question about the review period. I know it's suggested for the six months, and we can do every six months. Or if there is no review period, if that number eight was off of there, and let's say a property had concerns and residents, neighbors came forward with concerns, can the conditional use be reviewed? Or can it only be brought back to Planning Commission if one of those recommendations, or conditions previously listed was violated? I, I guess my question is if, can any conditional, can anything be reviewed at any time?
Yeah, if we have evidence of a condition not being met, regardless of the, regardless of a condition that specifies a review period, we can place it on an agenda for future review.
Okay.
And revocation. We don't technically need a condition specifying a timeline, but I think from a staff perspective, it helps us to make sure and place things on the calendar to make sure that they're annually or regularly reviewed, rather than waiting for something to happen before it, before it's reviewed.
So like if a condition was that it reviewed after six months, and then after that is, if anything's brought forward, it can be reviewed?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Or to that end, in the review process, adding additional conditions that may address something that wasn't foreseen?
I think you could, if you have substantial evidence as to what that condition is that's being added.
Sure. Like, kind of back to your first point, like if there was evidence for the parking or noise or something, it could be added? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ryan.
I'll have to agree with the point that Susan was making, though. I, I just feel like, you know, conditional use and permitted use, you know, that permitted use is linking the property to a person. Change in ownership, something, if something like that happens, this procedure is is re-engaged. And I think if there's a way to ensure that if the property is sold, that that we, if we decide to go with conditional use, that it's, it's re-analyzed after the sale of that property in lieu of an annual re-up or something like that. Thanks.
So I, if I may chime in, I am reading Act 67, and it states, it does permit conditions such as the permit's duration, transfer, transfer or renewal. So yes, you could add a condition regarding transfer or renewal based on Act 67.
Yeah, and I, I also agree with Ryan. I think that's the prudent way to go. Go ahead, Susan.
I would propose that we add that, that when a property changes hands with a conditional use for, where it's a rooming house, that it needs to come back for reaffirmation.
Correct, I would agree. So at each item, then, that's something we could add it as the items are being taken up? Kyle? Carrie's on her head, so. Or?
In, in trying to think about how we would be notified, because we're, typically, when a property sells, we're notified after the fact. Our city assessor is made aware of it. And we can act after the fact. But I think it'd be more pertinent to notify any potential owner prior to the purchase that that condition exists. I guess you could argue to the fact that if, if an applicant receives a conditional use permit, right, we follow up with the decision document, and it's that applicant's responsibility to uphold those conditions and/or relay those conditions if they are selling. So that, that may be the approach we take. Just understanding that we may not always know when a property is being sold, and may have to deal with it after the fact moving forward.
I think that potentially creates a, a good, quote, bureaucracy in, in the sense that then they also know what conditions they potentially are violating if they decide to change something on the property as well. It somewhat protects the city and the new owner, but it also hits the reset on that, on that six-month window or whatever we decide for review as well. Because they could sell the property, or they could sell it on, on day one, which is the first one of the six-month or whatever it was arbitrarily, and then not be up for review for quite a while and have issues with their neighbor or violations with the police department, and now we don't even catch it. And, you know, you have one bad apple that ruins that potential tourist rooming house.
Sure. So in regards to adding that as a, as a condition, there's, we can, as, as, as these requests come forward, we can, we can add it, or we can amend the ordinance and require it as a supplemental standard. Amending the ordinance would mean that we would have to come back in August and officially include it as a supplemental standard under the definition. Until then, though, we can always add it as a condition of approval for any that may come before that ordinance amendment occurs. Or we can, we can not amend the code and just add it as we see fit.
I think for simplicity, it'd be easier just not to amend the ordinance and, and take them up individually. But I do think it's important that we do add that as a condition.
So what about, you know, revoking the conditional use at the point of sale? Putting that in writing, and then when the property does come up for review, if we are reviewing these on an annual basis, or, I'm not sure, you know, what the duration you're thinking. But if we put it in that it's revoked at the time of sale, the new owner would have to come in for that conditional use and reapply?
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a few ways you could do it. You could, instead of a six-month review, you could just have an expiration or a renewal period. You know, an annual renewal, and if, as, as part of our process internally, when these renewals, you know, a month or two prior, we'd notify the owner. And if we can't contact the owner, and then we verify that ownership has changed, we then should be able to contact the new owner and state that a renewal is required for the conditional use permit and, and verify the operation or the continued operation of the, of the use. So I, I, you know, I think we can, there are multiple ways we can structure a cond- So I I, you know, I think we can, there are multiple ways we can structure a condition to both meet either an expiration period, a renewal period, or a review period. Or all three, and then we can also include any sale, transfer of the property to another entity would require a renewal.
Yeah, I think it would really be advantageous to the new owner as well because in today's market, as we know, there are a lot of people that are purchasing homes with the intention of assisting and paying the mortgage through this as a relief mechanism or you have a family that has extra room and you don't want to go find another property for what house values are. So we don't want to discourage it, I don't think so. But definitely a notification somehow, whatever unique way you have of letting the owner know, the new one especially. Anything else? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to item six, which is Donald Garrison, twenty-two dash zero 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 two nine eight. Action on a request for conditional use permit to operate a tourist rooming house at four sixty-five Shady Lane, parcel ID three four one two eight two four.
Thank you. I I want to comment before I turn it over to Keri for a quick review. And that's just about, again, the the postponement by council to send this back to plan commission. I appreciate the conversation on the previous item. I think we can carry that forward if there's a action to approve this. But I do feel as though, given the due process, given the postponement, I would strongly recommend that action be made by plan commission and a recommendation sent to council in fairness to the applicant who's applying under the existing ordinance. Keri?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Blazer and members of the commission. So as you, as we just discussed, this item was before you last month, went before common council, and common council did ask that the item return to plan commission for further review. So I won't go into, you know, great detail. I know a lot of you remember this item from last month. The applicant is requesting to run a tourist rooming house for rent for or for rent by owner property at the single-family home. The home is located within the R-two mixed residential district. And again, a tourist rooming house is a conditional use within the R-two district. So after staff review, we do feel the size of the parcel is adequate, the property is suitable, and the use is consistent with the surrounding land uses. The renters of the property are subject to all municipal code ordinances, including the city's noise ordinance. The applicant is also subject to all supplemental standards included in the zoning code, including obtaining all required licenses and permits, maintaining a guest registry, which I would like to add, does provide a tool for us in cases of potential complaints or concerns with the property. We do have documented details about who's staying there, their address, the information. And then they also are required to establish a point of contact within a five-mile radius. We have also, as Kyle said, added that condition, requiring that the conditional use permit be reviewed by the community development department six months after approval, upon which it can be scheduled for review by the plan commission and common council if necessary, is how it's worded now. If per your earlier discussion, you would like continued reviews, we can also add that. And then we can also add a condition that this approval shall remain in effect as long as the ownership remains the same or something to that effect. We could add that condition and that's not added at this time. So staff is recommending approval with conditions, and then also we may want to add that suggested condition as well.
Plan commission, any question, any further questions or?
I was just going to comment on the review period. I think six months after it starts is good. But I don't know if we need to do it every six months or every year. I think after after that first six months, if there's problems, it can be brought forward with those problems. But I think a six-month review is good and then if necessary, so as it's worded there.
I would agree. Susan, did you have something?
Oh, well, yes. I just wanted to clarify. Carrie was cutting out the audio here. We are going to then add a ninth condition to this list that specifies that the conditional use is valid through the ownership of Mr. Garrison, that it does essentially does not run with the land.
That's correct. Yeah, I think so. In in summary, transfer of ownership would result in renewal or review of the conditional use permit. And I think I'd I'd also add a condition that the the owner shall notify the city in writing prior to the transfer of ownership, something along those lines. Just to put it back on the owner again, if they're putting their property up for sale, they should then grant or identify that with the city so that we can prepare to review the item. Any other thoughts?
I guess it doesn't really have to be reviewed. If the new owner buys it and does not want to do anything with it, I guess it wouldn't even come here probably then. It would just that conditional use would end and the property would just be a regular property.
Correct, I would agree.
Yes, if if they, I think it'd be assumed that if if during the transfer of ownership, the use ceases, there is not a renewal then, and so the conditional use permit would cease.
Just to be clear, in that same municipal code for Wisconsin Rapids that I was citing before, if you take a look at um eleven point oh five point six one, section B, it states that the cessation of use only occurs if after twelve months the the condition is is not in use. So for instance, if someone just simply ceased to VRBO their their upstairs unit and they hadn't done that for twelve months, it would appear that that just dies. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's a that's a standard as well that exists for non-conforming uses within the zoning code. But again, if we're requiring renewal at the time of transfer of ownership or title transfer and there's no request, then I think we could we could at that point revoke that conditional use permit rather than wait the twelve months.
I think that would be a reasonable way to go.
What are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve based on the conditional uses through eight as written and to include nine and ten, which were the written notification upon sale and what was the last one that we discussed?
Cease on the sale?
Yeah, cease on sale, and we had a second one in there.
So the two I had noted was the approval shall remain in effect as long as the ownership does not change. And then the tenth would be that the city would would need to be notified in writing at the time of an of a sale of the property.
That's what it was, yes.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Anybody? Anybody oppose? That motion carried. On to item seven, Rita Wyler, twenty-two dash zero 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 five four one. Public hearing and action on a request for a conditional use permit to operate a tourist rooming house at three fifty-one Madison Street, parcel ID three four zero eight one two two dash nine. Historically, we'll have Kyle introduce the item, then we'll open a public hearing and then we'll have discussion. Kyle? Thank you. I'll turn it over to Keri to provide a background on the item.
Okay, so this item is also for a tourist rooming house. Some, just to compare, because we just had one. This is a little different in that the owner is proposing to be on-site while they're also providing services to renters. They do have a room in the upstairs portion of their home that was previously used by their adult daughter. It has its own exterior entrance, so it's a kind of nice setup for a person who would be renting the home and kind of keep their separate access to the property. So the existing home is also located within the R-two mixed residential district. And again, the tourist rooming house is a conditional use within that district. So looking at this parcel, we feel this parcel is adequate. I mean, it's a traditional, single-family home. As I said, it has a separate living quarters with an exterior entrance. They also would be subject to all the supplemental standards included in the zoning code, including obtaining the required licenses and permits, maintaining that same guest registry and establishing a point of contact within a five-mile radius. In this case, they would be the the point of contact. They would be also staying on-site. And again, that we added the same condition with the requiring the six-month review. And then it it's also within the purview of the planning commission if they'd want to add the two conditions that were previously added as well. So staff is recommending approval with conditions.
Thank you, Keri. So at four forty-one PM, we can open a public hearing. I'll call three times for speaking in favor and against. So for the first time, does anybody wish to speak against the request? And for a second time, does anybody wish to speak against the request? And lastly, is there anybody that wishes to speak against that request? Does anybody wish to speak in favor of the request? Second, if you would like to, Rita, you could or and if you want to come up to the podium? Oh, we can wait. We can do that next after this if they have any questions. And then for a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor? And last for the last time, does anybody wish to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, at four forty-two PM, we can close the public hearing. And commission, what are your thoughts if Reed is willing to speak? If you have any questions?
I have a question for Kyle. Kyle, you mentioned early on Stephen's point, if 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 the owner is residing on the property and allows rental of a portion of the property, they switch that to permitted. Can you explain, would that be a benefit in this situation? Is that something maybe we should be talking about or do we stick with with our guns on the conditional use permit at this point?
You know, at this point, with regards to the conversation and the recommended conditions, I think sticking with the the conditional use permit for just tourist rooming cross to tourist rooming cross tourist rooming houses across the board is the way we should do it. I think, though, that if if you wanted to be less restrictive, that would be a good middle ground to say that, right, owner-occupied residents are likely going to be upkept maybe better than those that are are non-owner-occupied. And that's what what Point has recognized. I think there's a difference, though, in between Point and and Rapids in that Point's a college town as well. And so I think you've got some different issues that exist, especially around the university, that may be more concerning with regards to owner occupancy and and non-owner occupancy. So I don't think we have those those same concerns here because we we don't have a university with a lot of rental housing and and a lot of other code violations and issues. So I think we, you know, I'd recommend that we just keep it generally as it's written and then add those same conditions that we added for the first request. Does anybody else have any questions or any questions for the applicant? If not, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve as written, one through eight, for the conditional uses and to include nine and ten, just as before, with the written notification to the city and termination of the permit upon change of ownership.
I'll second.
So motion by Ben, second by Eric. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Susan.
Um, I just would like to announce I will abstain from voting. I have two pieces of property within the the boundary line.
Okay. If you could note that she's getting the scene. So seeing no further questions or comments, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And does anybody oppose? That motion carries. Congratulations. On to item number eight, Marshfield, this time you can sneak out if you want. Thank you. Item eight is Marshfield Clinic Health System, MCHS, two-two dash zero 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 six zero zero. Request for a sign exception to increase the maximum number and the maximum height of ground signs at four forty, Twenty-Fourth Street South, parcel ID three four one zero seven eight four. Kyle? Again, I'll hand this over to Keri. She can summarize. Thank you.
Okay, so the item for you is for a sign exception to increase the maximum number of ground signs and then the maximum height of those ground signs at four forty, Twenty-Fourth Street South at the Marshfield Clinic Health System site. This property is currently being used as a healthcare clinic. And then a few months ago, I'm sure you remember also, there was a healthcare center that is currently under construction. The property is Zone B-five Mixed Use Commercial District. And again, this request includes an exception to allow three ground signs total in the B-five Mixed Use Commercial District as opposed to the maximum of one that's specified in the sign code. Two of these signs are sign refacings and one is a new ground sign. And the and in addition, the request is to allow height above the maximum ten-foot permitted for single-tenant ground signs, which will be the case for two of the three signs. So when staff reviewed this, it is quite a large site. It's over ten acres. There are two principal structures on the property once that hospital's constructed. The three ground the three ground signs are proportionate to the lot size, building scale, parking lot size, and overall site design. When vehicles are entering the site, they have to turn a couple times. There's one point of entry. It has frontage on four streets. We do feel there is need to provide information and direction to those entering and circulating throughout the site, both just for convenience and for health and safety reasons, being that it is a clinic and hospital site. Similarly, for the increased sign height request, we feel it's substantiated due to the lot size, building scale, parking lot size, overall site design, and multiple street frontages. This is an example of a need to, you know, provide adequately sized direction, information to to meet the health and safety needs as well as just the convenience needs of people who are accessing the site and circulating them around the site and kind of figuring out which building to go to and where to go. So our recommendation is to approve the sign exception, allowing the three ground signs, two of which exceed the maximum height allowed. The representative for the applicant, Tracy Trout, is on the call and she she would be happy, I'm sure, to answer answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Good. I was just going to say, good evening. I'm I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I guess I'll I'll start out with making a motion to approve the request for the reasons stated by community development department. And then we have a second by Ben. Yeah, there's nothing worse when you're trying to go around a hospital campus and you can't find your way. So I think signage is very important.
Especially the busy highway there.
Exactly. So does anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. And does anybody oppose? That motion carries. Thank you for being online.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item nine, Chad Whirl, twenty-two dash zero 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 six four three. Request for a site plan review to construct the building addition at eight fifty Rosecrans Street, parcel ID three four zero one five five zero. We need development, I'll say, instead of.
Okay. Yes, so the applicant Chad Whirl is before you today to for a building addition at eight fifty Rosecrans Street. And I'm sure you remember this item from before. It was proposed as an accessory structure and the applicant has been operating a successful custom welding and fabricating shop for several years. And and as we said before, the business has grown to such an And as we said before, the business has grown to such an extent that the applicant was before you in April with a proposal for an accessory structure. And he is now proposing to attach this portion and do a building addition in lieu of the accessory structure, and this is mainly for cost-saving purposes, for firewall and other costs that are associated with doing the accessory structure versus the attached structure. So these are some site photos of the property. The photo to the right is showing the area where that addition will be. It's the same footprint largely that was proposed as an accessory structure, with the exception of the portions that would have been between the main building and the accessory building. So this proposed building addition is permitted and appropriate for the existing use in site. There are minor differences. I think before, the eve was a little bit larger due to the space configuration. Also, this building is shown to be a bit higher than the previous accessory structure. However, it's still within the, still meeting the height requirement. And so some of the conditions that will be new as a result of it being attached, there will be an ADA-approved parking space that'll be required to be part of the site design. There will also be building foundation landscaping that will be required to be incorporated into the site design, and staff is recommending approval with conditions.
Thank you. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the request, let's just simply take in the accessory structure and attaching it to the building.
Yeah, I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And does anybody oppose? That motion carries. On to item number 10, City of Wisconsin Rapids, 22-000573, which will be a public hearing and action and request to amend the official street map of the City of Wisconsin Rapids. Community Development Department.
Yes, thank you. So the last time the official street map was amended was 2009, which is quite some time ago. When we think about some of the plans that we have, our comprehensive plan is typically amended every five or 10 years, so the official street map is certainly overdue, and there are a few items that are needing to be updated, a few street classifications and corrections on the map. And then the primary one, which somewhat prompted this request, is the right-of-way along East Jackson Street, particularly as it relates to the proposed jail. So the right-of-way previously that was identified was 120, or 100, I'm sorry, a total of 132 feet of right-of-way, which is classified as an expressway. And as the memo indicates, both from a design standpoint, especially looking at what's being done on West Jackson, that right-of-way is no longer needed. So both the engineering department and the planning department both concur that reducing that street right-of-way width on the official street map makes sense, and so we're recommending 100 feet from the bridge to Third, and then 80 feet from Third onward on East Jackson And then again, you know, I can walk through the other couple of amendments. They're minor and primarily just relate to some corrections with roadway changes. With that, again, we're recommending approval of those, those three main changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. So at 4:54, we can open a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak against the request to make the amendments? And for a second time, does anybody wish to speak against the request? And lastly, does anybody wish to speak against the request? Okay, would anybody like to speak in favor of the request? And for a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the request? And for a final time, for a third time, does anybody wish to speak in favor? Okay, we can close the public hearing at 4:54 PM. I believe the city engineer is online if anybody has any questions, along with Planning Department.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Susan.
Poor connection here, but basically, my question has to do with something I read further on in the explanation, and that had to do with the addition of a bike trail on the roadway on Jackson Street for some distance. I'm not exactly sure which part of Jackson Street was being referred to there. Do we have any statistic on truck traffic and how a traffic study would look with regard to the safety issue of having a bike lane there?
If I recall correctly, and you can correct me, it's not a truck route, correct?
You know, I don't believe it is, and I think maybe the bike lane was referenced in the West Jackson Street design where we have a 10-foot path. I don't know if the bike lane would be replicated in on-street bike lane. I think it would just be more so that path, that 10-foot path. But if Joe is on, he might be able to correct me if I'm wrong.
Good evening, this is Joe Eckstead. So the on-street, well, it's within the right-of-way. As Kyle mentioned, the 10-foot path that's referenced is very similar to the West Jackson Street. If that same corridor was carried through onto East Jackson, we would largely mimic the cross-section, or at least being proposed at this time, where we would include a trail component as part of the road right-of-way. It wouldn't be in the street, it'd be off to the side of the street, and that would connect with some of the bike-mapping routes that we currently have along Lincoln Street south of Grand, which provides some opportunities to connect to the Aquatic Center. And as far as truck traffic goes, it's not a defined truck route. Certainly, there may be some truck deliveries that are adjacent to the Jackson Street route, but we have limited data on traffic counts, even more limited on truck counts. But from just local knowledge of the truck traffic, primarily, they're using West Jackson Street, they cross the Jackson Street Bridge, and they head up First Street, largely to the RCH Building, and back and forth on that corridor. So much reduced truck traffic east of First Street.
Thank you, Joe. Susan, did that answer your question?
Well, I guess it does to a certain extent. I'm all in favor of bike lanes and that kind of access to the roadway. I am also fearful of children intermixing with 18-wheelers. So I don't know what we do about that besides just be aware of it and try to plan to avoid it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
My question kind of stems off of Susan's as well. Joe, are you able to explain a little bit better what this bike lane would look like? I also have two children and see quite a few children commute to and from their house from How School, which is in close vicinity as well. You know, how would that look and the safety features of that as a potential path of travel for the kids?
So the proposed trail that's currently, I'm calling it, referring to it as a trail because it's wider than a typical sidewalk, although, you know, the trail that's currently being constructed on West Jackson Street, it'll be an asphalt, asphalt trail, largely going to function just like a sidewalk. Typically, you know, bicyclists need to obey the rules of the road. And so the larger travel lanes that are provided on West Jackson Street, we have 14-foot wide travel lane with, without the gutter sections included. There's ample width through there for the, you know, the more avid bikers that, you know, want to stick to the travel lanes and commute or, you know, get from point A to point B. But the 10-foot or larger sidewalk section slash trail, it's largely just going to be a wider sidewalk.
So it's outside the curb line?
Sure. Is there something in the city that you could refer to potentially as an example, or?
Is that like First Street North going up that path that way?
Yeah, I'm just trying to
Yeah, it would be similar to that, yeah.
Okay. So kind of separated, but still, I guess, within the roadway, not a curb that separates or anything like
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, it's outside of the curb, but still within the road right-of-way.
Okay. But just a greater distance of protection, and then that would be painted off as in, I'm just picturing the Grand Avenue Bridge where they actually have a line and is segregated than the traffic on the road?
Yeah, so there isn't any specific plans in place at this point, so this is all just in, I guess, inferior possible future. But yeah, the bikes could still be accommodated on the bridge via paint line, and then there'd still be the sidewalk structure that's on the bridges today.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or what are your thoughts?
I guess, Mr. Chair, I have another question, and that has to do with the redesignation of First Avenue and Johnson Street as other than arterial, I believe it. Joe, maybe you could explain the change in terminology and what implications that has for any other aspects of the use of First Avenue and Johnson?
So the redesignation of those two roadways, locally, they don't really change the, I guess, the future uses or redesign of those roadways really in any way. The one possible change that we would look at is when we apply for state or federal funding, like for instance, the state transportation program that's funding the West Jackson Street project, at least in part, is they look at the functional classification. They don't, you know, they'll consult the local functional classification, the maps that we have, you know, the official map here, but they also have their own functional classification, and that's their official designation for, you know, is this project eligible? And in order to be eligible, it has to be a collector's street or above. So by redesignating these as local streets, it doesn't have any bearing on state or federal aid for those projects because they use their own eligibility mapping for that. Other than that, we would just, it's just a more accurate designation for those streets. Their current uses are a local designation. They don't, you know, for instance, First Avenue is, for one day out of the week, is the farmer's market. And so if it were a collector's street, it would be, you know, it'd be, as a comparison, shutting down Third Avenue, where it would be harder to do that because that's the route that everybody wants to take to get from A to B. And so redesignation is largely just fitting more of what their current use is today in projected future use.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the listed amendments to the official street map.
Thank you, Ryan. And I can second that, or Lee got it, so Lee can second it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And does anybody oppose? That motion carried. We're moving on to item number 11. Thank you, gentlemen. City of Wisconsin Rapids, 22-000398, public hearing and action to amend Chapter 11 zoning ordinance specifically regarding maximum building coverage for principal and accessory structures on lots in residential district. Community Development Department.
Okay, so this item has been spurred by some complication with how our zoning ordinance describes lot coverage and how then staff is tasked with calculating lot coverage. So dimensional requirements in all zoning districts within the city and within most cities include maximum building coverage requirements. In residential districts, our zoning ordinance separates maximum lot coverage requirements for principal structures and accessory structures as follows in the table above. So it's 30% to 40% for the maximum building coverage for principal buildings, and then maximum building coverage for detached accessory buildings are 20% of the rear yard area, and then, but not greater than X amount of square feet depending on the district, so 900 or 500. So this is somewhat atypical, looking across other communities, breaking out principal building coverage from accessory building coverage isn't very typical. It's usually an overall lot coverage. And the 20% rear yard area is somewhat difficult to calculate consistently and fairly among all homeowners. And this is mostly due to the fact that lots, a lot of times, aren't laid out really rectangulally. The picture attached to the memo kind of illustrates an example of houses that are on more typically configured lots that can be irregularly shaped, and then the way houses are laid out on those lots can add to the complexity of doing the calculation. So this slide provides just kind of some comparable, kind of a variety of cities, and just kind of looking at how they do things. And the maximum lot coverage ranges quite a bit depending on the zoning district coupled with the community. But looking at kind of the variety of places, there's a range of 30% to 60%, depending on how high density the lots are and the city that they're located within. So it's not so much that we're looking at figuring out a different, the proportions are probably fine, it's more trying to figure out a way to have a calculation that's just more straightforward and easier to do. So looking at this, we're recommending a maximum building coverage by lot. We feel like this, the 30% to 50% should still come pretty close space-wise to what was done with the 20% rear yard, but we can simply use the lot area, which is very easy to obtain, and then whatever the buildings, covered buildings on site are, do a simple calculation and then determine if it exceeds the overall percentage versus trying to come up with the rear yard area first and then come up, you know, figure out what 20% of that would be. So we're recommending the changes as proposed in this table.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Yeah, I just want to add that, you know, again, when we look at surrounding municipalities, it's rare that the rear yard area is regulated separately from the overall lot coverage ratio. And as the, again, the picture on page 122 of 124 shows, you have irregularly shaped lots and homes that are positioned at angles. It makes it very, very difficult for us to pull a number, and it's very limiting to the homeowner in many instances, especially if they have a larger setback and a smaller rear yard, because then 20% is much less. So, you know, I think with the recommended changes, we're allowing for homeowners to kind of build out their lots a little bit more. It's allowing staff to implement and enforce the ordinance a little bit more and ultimately increase density on many homes, existing homes. So again, for us, it seems fitting, especially when you compare it to So again, for us, it, it seems fitting, especially when you compare it to how other communities regulate lot coverage. Thank you.
Yeah, and I agree. You know, I, I like the concept of a neighborhood and a front yard and, and a side yard, but if I want to put a big old garage in my backyard, I don't want to be limited. You know, it's not affecting any visibility or the appearance of my neighborhood. But, you know, it, it can improve the quality of my life if I wanted to shop back there or something like that. So I, I support this change.
What kind of brought this discussion on is just ease of use for your own department, then, and, and calculations?
Yeah, it's, it's always been somewhat questioned because, again, it's, for, for infill lots, especially smaller lots, it can be more difficult to calculate. For lots in the suburbs that have, you know, a half acre or, you know, a quarter acre, it doesn't really come into play because the nine-hundred-square-foot maximum for a detached structure usually comes into play before the twenty percent because rear yards are so big. So yeah, it's, it's something that honestly, I don't know if it was heavily enforced previously. So we looked at the old zoning code, and it actually carried through from the old zoning code into the new zoning code. But I don't have, or I haven't stumbled upon a lot of different analysis in the past. So I just think it was overlooked and wasn't really enforced. As it's written, you know, it's our job to enforce the code, and so we've been doing that, and it has been cumbersome for us, and it's, it's made a lot of homeowner, homeowners unhappy because, again, they can't utilize their rear yard to the full extent that they want to.
Thanks.
Kyle, can you explain why rural, rural residential district is still at thirty and not increased as well?
So the rural residential district, I believe, requires five, a five-acre minimum. So from a lot coverage standpoint, thirty percent of five acres is going to be still a substantial amount. And I think the intent of that district is that it borders agriculture, and is kind of a transition from agriculture into more high-dense residential. So I think having a, a smaller lot coverage at thirty percent is appropriate.
Thank you.
We also don't have many properties zoned rural residential.
Yeah, that was...
I think we have a handful.
A handful, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, what are your wishes? Did we not have that already?
It looks like we have a, yeah, a public hearing for this, but I don't think we held one for this.
All right. So at five thirteen, let's open the public hearing. Does anybody in our full audience wish to speak against the request? And for a second time, does anybody wish to speak against the request? And for a third time, does anybody wish to speak against the request? All right, for the first time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the request? For a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the request? And for a final time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the request? Seeing none, at five thirteen PM, we can close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve Plan twenty-two-dash-three-nine-eight as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric and Ben. We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion, comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And does anybody wish to, oh, and opposed to say nay? Okay, that motion carries. We are on to item number twelve, which is City of Wisconsin Rapids, twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-six-four-eight, public hearing, which I'll remember, an action on, an action on to amend the Chapter eleven zoning code specifically to allow temporary residential shelters as a permitted or conditional use within other residential and commercial districts. Kyle, or Community Development?
So this is, again, another ordinance amendment. It's not tied to dimensional standards, but use, and that is for a temporary, temporary residential shelter. It's defined, there are some supplemental standards, not many, but it, it's unique given its, its location. It's only right now permitted as a conditional use in the I-one institutional district. So when you think about the definition of residential structure, or, yeah, a residential shelter, it's only allowed in institutional districts, so, you know, you think churches, civic centers, hospitals, and schools. To me, it doesn't feel like that's the most fitting district to permit these. If I had to guess, I think it was primarily in relation to churches. A lot of times, you'll find warming centers or homeless centers in churches, but you also find them in downtowns where there's dense populations where these types of uses make sense. So again, we, this was, I think, first looked at when we, when we discussed and received kind of preliminary requests to do a homeless shelter last year on Grand Avenue, and it never, it never persisted due to some building code requirements. But it kind of got us thinking that if, if we're to put one in a commercial area, does it fit or not? And it never moved forward anyways. But we've also got a request from a, a kind of a battered women's shelter. It's not moving forward at that location either, but again, it got us thinking about this use because I think this is the most fitting use that we would define those types of uses. And so I think for us, when we look at that as a residential use, I think, I think it may fit within those multifamily residential districts, so the R-three district. I don't think the R-four, the R-four, I think, is fifteen or more housing units. So in this case, with the supplemental standards, I believe the maximum occupants is fifteen. So again, R-three, to me, is fitting. And then I think, you know, also within the downtown perhaps, and/or the, the B-two commercial districts. You know, I'm not sure about the B-two general commercial because that's, you know, most of our Eighth Street or commercial corridors, so having a, you know, a battered women's shelter or a homeless shelter in those corridors might not be as fitting. But certainly, I think permitting it as a conditional use in R-three and possibly the downtown district might be appropriate. So that's, that's what we've recommended. You know, I, I don't think there's a necessity to act today if you wanted to think about it and maybe bring this back, or if you wanted to, right, make changes to what staff is recommending. I'd, I think I'd be more than willing to be accommodating to those changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission, have any questions? Counsel? Thoughts? Or haven't ever really given it a thought?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Susan.
Are we in the middle of the public hearing, or are we in discussion?
And I forgot again. So why don't we do the public hearing and then have a discussion? So at five eighteen PM, let's open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak against the, the request or the amendment to the zoning code? For a second time, would anybody wish to speak against the amendment to the zoning code? And for a third time, does anybody wish to speak against the amendment to the zoning code? And I guess for the first time, would anybody wish to speak in favor of the amendment? For a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the amendment? And your last opportunity to speak in favor of the amendment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at five nineteen PM. And we can continue on with the discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Susan.
Okay, I, my question has to do with the subject line in the memo that Kyle presents here with the word "or." So just to clarify, there are some situations, as for instance, I-one, where it is already permitted. So in all of the other zoning areas that are cited, it would be conditional use, not "or," but strictly conditional use, correct?
Kyle, are you saying that if we want to make it a permitted use within a district, that would be up to us?
Correct. The reason it was cited that way is in the event that Plan Commission wanted to change it from a conditional use to a permitted use, the, the subject line would, would grant you the authority to do that. I'm not recommending for that. I'm, I'm recommending to keep it as a conditional use because I think it, it's a unique enough use where we want to make sure that, you know, there's adequate parking on site, and that there might be additional conditions very similar to a tourist rooming house where, you know, depending on the number of occupants, do we want to, you know, require screening if they have, you know, outdoor seating or an eating area or whatever it may be? And I think, again, the, the best way to do that is via the conditional use permit.
And I would agree with Kyle. You know, I think sometimes some, some of these can be controversial, and I think it's important to, you know, leave it as a conditional use permit, notify the surrounding area, have that discussion, and outline those concerns in a public format versus just permitting it and going forward. That's my opinion.
Agreed.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, there's a lot of similarities and parallels to, to the rooming house here, not in the sense that somebody's operating a business, but we have then an expanded access for people in our community that potentially could benefit from this, whether it's temporary or a little more long-term. So basically, in synopsis, you're just looking to expand that conditional use to R-three, B-one, and B-two.
Correct.
Okay. Where it does not exist currently, it's just in I-one.
That is correct.
Okay. And we could potentially take action on this tonight. I'll make a motion to approve the memo with the conditional use expanded into R-three, B-one, and B-two.
I would second that. Anyone else have any further thoughts, comments, questions? And unlike the rooming house or the tourist, it's already, it's not permitted by state, so, or, you know, state statutes. So if there, if one came about, we do have the ability to deny it through that conditional use, or not, not approving a conditional use for it at least.
And then review if also, you know, there are issues.
Correct. Seeing no further questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
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 And anybody opposed, say nay. That motion carried. We're on to item thirteen, adjournment.
Second.
Motion by Eric, seconded by Ben to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? That motion carried. Thank you, everybody.